Did you get in place this day?
All right, we are at three o'clock. We'll call this meeting to order. And I guess we'll start with you, Joe, with the community survey results. This is Kate, by the way.
Is that my cue to?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. I'm. But I do appreciate the opportunity to be with you again. And everyone can hear me on back?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, great. And so I know you have the slide back of my presentation. And so what I thought I would do is I would go through kind of a high level, low step, that slide presentation. And then if there are questions, I would just say, happy to see you last one. So I'm going to bounce to the second slide. And one of the things that I always like to note is the limitations of the data. And what I mean by that is that by design, this is not a scientific survey. So in other words, we didn't do polling like we might do for a big election. Instead, what we did is we used a convenient sample. And this is while my shop does both, we prefer this model. And that is we reschedule everyone to do the aspect to provide us with feedback. But the reason I mentioned the subject is that it would not be psychologically appropriate, you know, for me to do things like calculate error, run refreshments, or do some of the other things that we might do with a traditional poll. So again, I just wanted to mention that up top. With that, I'm going to go to the next slide and show you a little bit about the methodology that we use to conduct this survey. And as you know, the survey was done a lot of early days in the past. And what we did is we put cards to every community member encouraging them to participate in an online survey. Careful, and they also do things that are pushing them to get a terrific job. A little bit of, you know, a paper survey. There's also, originally, there was also an art game that was implemented. I told you, it's a simple app to get the survey online. You can do this website, and then our online survey equipment from that district URL. I'll also note that with the survey invitation, community members could also request a paper version, a hard copy of the survey. And I know that we received it, there's a few requests for those.
Joe.
One thing that I want to note here.
Joe, sorry to interrupt. Could you speak just a little bit louder for, so our mics can get you? Thank you.
Sure, sure. One thing that, one thing that I will notice, by the way, is that a little bit better?
Yes, thank you.
Can you hear me a little bit better?
Yes.
All right, okay. One thing that I will mention is that there are nine additional surveys that need to be added. These are paper surveys that came in late. So when I finalize the report, you're going to see, and I don't think, it's not going to change the numbers very much at all, but just to be clear, you're going to see the survey count go up by nine. So I would just, I just want to mention that upfront. And those are additional paper copies that came in during the timeframe of the survey, but came in relatively late. So with that, we'll go to the next slide, please. We had 3,686 people complete the survey. And as we're going through the survey, I want to make note of what I'm going to call two different groups. I'm going to talk about the all-response group. That is, everyone who took the survey, everyone who completed the survey. And then I'm going to speak to a comparison group. And that comparison group that I'm going to speak to includes respondents who, number one, do not have children currently attending the school district. Number two, are residents of the district. Number three, are not employees of the district. And number four, do not have children who are younger than school age. And the reason why I like to include that comparison group is because, as we know, between, say, in most communities, between 70 and 80 percent of people who go to vote don't have children in the district. In other words, they tend to mirror our comparison group more than they do our all group, okay? And so I wanted to include that comparison group along with the all-response group. You're going to note, when we go through this, that the comparison group, that group that I just described, will be in parentheses and italics. And there, so while there were 3,686 people in our all-response group, there are 780 people in our comparison group. Go to the next slide, please. The other thing that I'll mention is that questions that included an answer were required to be answered in the online survey. So you'll see the answers in some of these survey questions. Let's go to the next slide, please. Okay. And so the very first question that we asked was the question, what is your age? Again, we start with a series of questions related to demographics. So this allows us to disaggregate the data. And here, I won't go through all of these. I will say that we have a good distribution of ages. And it's really just about always the case that our comparison group tends to skew a little bit older, okay? And one thing in particular that I'll just note here is that when I look at this responses for age, when I see 10.1 percent for our all-response group for 65 and older, that to me is a real, is a real key. And I'd like to see the number that high for this. It's difficult, as we've discussed, sometimes to get people who are older than 65 to take the survey because, again, you know, they don't have, most of the time, they don't have children, of course, in the district. All right, and then to the next slide. We asked the question about where do you live? And here, I'll let you look at that breakdown. And 90.5 percent said that they live in Sioux Falls, within the Sioux Falls School District boundary. We'll go to the next slide, please. Question is, how long have you lived in the school district? Again, this, these numbers are going to largely mirror our age question. And again, not surprisingly, our comparison group is going to skew a little bit, a little bit longer in terms of how long they've lived in the school district. We'll go to the next slide, please. This one is going to be a little more difficult to read, perhaps on the screen. I call this question the sorter question, okay? And this is one where we ask people to tell us kind of what, you know, who they are. It gives us a sense of who's taking the survey. So I'll read it in case it's difficult reading. We ask people, you know, say, I have school-aged children. I have preschool-aged children. I have children who currently attend or have attended a Sioux Falls School District. I have school-aged children who are open and enrolled in the Sioux Falls School District. I have school-aged children who are open and enrolled in another school district. I have grandchildren. I have attended the Sioux Falls School District school. I'm a member of the community with no children, who have attended a Sioux Falls School District school. I'm an employee. I'm currently a student of the district. And then other. So here, again, we're asking people to tell us who they are. And again, this allows us to disaggregate the results. And one thing that I will mention here, again, this just closed on Sunday. And on Monday, a colleague of mine in my shop spent, you know, most of the day writing the reports and also disaggregating the data. We're looking for anomalies in the data. And we use this question to try to get a sense of what different types of groups are saying and to see if there are large differences in how people respond to the survey. Next, if you have school-aged children in the fall, where do your children attend? And here, you'll see on page three of the actual survey report where we listed the actual percentages for those. It would have been way too, way too long to try to put that into a slide. Next, we ask the question, where do you get information about the Sioux Falls School District? And again, I'd ask you to take a look at the survey report, I believe that's on page five. One thing that I'll note here is that we tend to see, maybe not surprisingly, that, you know, district mailing, the media, social media, tend to be a little larger in terms of the numbers here than we may see with some other surveys because, again, this is how many people learned about the survey. An interesting thing here, and I don't want to go into too much analysis here, but I did find it interesting, your newspaper leadership was pretty significantly higher than other places where we, I ask this question just about in every survey we do. Newspaper leadership was higher. TV and radio news was much higher than we typically see. Then we answer the question, I'm satisfied with the Sioux Falls School District. And again, at this point, I break the all-responses and the comparison group down so you can take a look at those two numbers. And sometimes I think it's helpful when taking a look at this to combine the strongly and agree, strongly agree and agree numbers, and the disagree and strongly disagree, to kind of have two binary, you know, responses here. And so again, looking at strongly and agree, and agree for your all responding group, combining 23.9 and 59.9, we have 83.3 compared with combining the same number of 75.1 satisfaction for that question. By the way, very, 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 very high. Much higher than we tend to see for that. Then, the next question, we give people an open response opportunity. So we ask the question, how would you describe the Sioux Falls School District to someone who's not familiar with it? And we give people, again, an open response box, provide information. And what we're looking for is we're really looking for themes in those, in those responses. And they tend to be pretty diverse, the types of responses that we've received. Two things that we saw over and again when we were looking at that, the district was described as large. And as I mentioned in the report itself, large seemed to indicate not the physical size of the building, but refer to large in terms of large number of students who attend the schools. So the word overcrowding, you know, came up in several ways in that context. But the other theme that we saw was just this idea of excellence. And we saw the word excellence again and again. We saw the word very good again and again. I did a very similar survey in a Milwaukee area suburb school, a much smaller district. And those, it kind of saw responses that really mirrored one another. So again, very high levels of satisfaction as people described the district as being very good and excellent. Go to the next slide, please. Then we asked respondents a question related to their familiarity of the district's facility and the process of order using the science information. And you're going to see the breakdown. And I think one of the things that's interesting is to have what I would call a pretty engaged community as it relates to these items. And I would call your attention to that comparison group. Where 25.3 percent of your comparison group indicated that they feel very well informed. Again, that's higher than we typically see for this type of question. We also disaggregate the data based on those questions. So we try to get a sense of whether people who had different levels of familiarity answered questions differently. And we didn't really see that there was a strong difference. Next question, next slide. I believe the district's most urgent facility needs must be addressed now. Again, I'm going to combine strongly and agree, and agree. And we do that for our all-response group with 95 percent compared with 86.8 percent for our comparison group. Next, I would vote yes on a referendum question if I felt it was the correct solution to address the district's facility needs related to enrollment growth. And we're going to see that we have just about the same amount of votes. So for this one, when we combine strongly and agree, and agree for our all-response group, we're going to see 94.3 for that group compared with 85.4 for our comparison group. So again, very much mirrors the question that came before that. So again, at this point in the survey, if you'll recall, we would have gone through the demographic questions. We would have provided some information about the needs, and we would have asked these questions. Then we asked a similar question. I would vote yes on a referendum question if I felt it was the correct solution to address necessary maintenance and updates. Again, very similar. 93.9 when we combined strongly and agree, and agree, and 86.9 for our all-comparison group. Next slide, I would vote yes on a referendum question if I felt it was the correct solution and I'm sure that this is equitable, like the learning space, the new instructional needs. Again, similar. For our all-response groups, 92.3 compared with our comparison groups, combined strongly and agree, agree, 83.9. So at this point, we introduce tax impact with the question, I would support the recommendation outlined by the passport. And again, at this point, we would have provided them with that information in the survey. And we say the question, assuming the cost of $2 per month or $2 per year on an average home in Seattle, $185,000 in technical evaluation. When we combine strongly and agree, and agree for our all-response group, which has 88.8 percent, and for our comparison group, it's 75.5 percent. We then, I would say, related to the test, that the exception of, we have, we provided people with an older response that we, you know, we needed to answer than wanted. Here we saw a lot of different responses. There really were no specific themes. We didn't see any strong themes come out. We spent a lot of time poring through this data. I think if there was any theme at all, it would have been a minor theme related to, you know, kind of financial impact of this. In some cases, people saying this is money lost pounds. In other cases, people saying that this is too much money. But again, I think the takeaway from that question is no real strong theme. Then we ask the question related to the land donation. The question is, do you support building a high school on land donated by Sanford Health that's described above? And yes, build on the land donated by Sanford Health, 6.1 for our all-response group versus 7.1 for our comparison group. Again, you're going to see that there's a little difference in those responses. I will tell you, and this is obviously not a question that I've asked before, but you're, I think one of the takeaways from the survey is that your comparison group and your all-group response were fairly, were pretty consistent. Then we allowed, we gave people another space to provide the board with additional information as we consider solutions to address the district's needs. And here, what we tend to see is that people go back to the last question, okay? So it's not unusual for people to go back to the last question and provide some feedback on their last question. And I included in the report, we didn't see really any strong themes. A minor theme was related to the land donation. In some cases, there were some questions related to that land donation. And I included some of those comments in the report itself. So that is, that is a quick run-through of the survey results. Again, I provide a little more detail in the actual report. But happy to, happy to take any questions if you want.
This might be, this is Kate, this might be a question more for Deanne. But do we know how many postcards went out?
There were approximately 83,000 postcards mailed. That was one to every postal customer in the area as best we could describe as the Sioux Falls School District. The way that they draw addresses for the postal company, of course, zip codes don't do you any good because the district cuts through the middle of zip codes. We did have some people question, call in and say, I received this postcard, but I believe my land is, you know, associated with a neighboring school district. I informed them as such that they were either able to participate in the survey and select the item that says, I am not in the Sioux Falls School District, but I have an opinion, so that they too, as a neighboring homeowner to district property, would have that ability as well.
Thank you. Joe, this is Cynthia Mickelson. My question is, I was happy to see in the comparison group, the high percentage at 66.1 of, if you could add the age group, 55 to 64, and the over 65 group, as far as who completed this survey. Is that pretty typical? Is that high? That seems to me about like voter turnout as well. What are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I missed the first part of that. Were you specifically speaking to the age of the comparison group?
Yes, so I'm looking at the 55 to 64 and over 65. If you combine that, those two age groups in the comparison group numbers, you're at 66.1 percent. Is that pretty typical within that comparison group for the age? I would think that's pretty typical for voting, but what are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, so when I'm, when I'm going through the, and looking at results come in, and we go in and really watch these results come in. A little bit of background, we're looking for, are people struggling with the question? Are they taking too much time on a question? Does it look like they're not spending enough time on a question? People, people that will, what I would consider the appropriate amount of time on all of the questions. And then we're looking at the responses as they come in. And so to your question, when I look at that, the distribution across ages, that seems very appropriate for me, to me. And I would say that if, this is a good, strong, you know, respondent tool, I would say, that the board can use as a series of data points. And so I don't know offhand what your, you know, in terms of people who actually go to the polls, whether this matches kind of their age characteristics. I wouldn't, I wouldn't know that. But my sense is that generally speaking, we find that the comparison group, the results for the comparison group, tends to mirror, in fact, it tends to be a little bit lower. It tends to mirror, and maybe be a little less rosy than actual voting, you know, on an election day. And again, that's why we use that, that's why I included that comparison group.
And then I was, Kate and I were looking at the school distribution of who responded on that. And I noticed it was probably higher on our west side schools. And I found that interesting in our report, that they seemed to be the most interested in this.
And Lincoln.
And Lincoln, yeah.
Joe, in other school districts where you've done...
Joe, in other school districts where you've done similar surveys, when you look at the positive response, agree or strongly agree, we're in that 90% range. When you look at page five and page seven, how closely in other districts where you've done this and they've done a bond election, do you see the result for the bond election? I'm sure it doesn't mirror that. I wouldn't be so naive as to believe that there'd be a 90% approval. That'd be nice, but is there any, is there any comparison, positive or negative, in the election results that you've watched compared to the agree and strongly agree on the survey?
Yeah, I can. And in answering that question, I'm always careful to say that, I don't want to, you know, I never want to overpromise because again, I started by saying that this wasn't a scientific survey. But again, we tend to find that that comparison group tends to mirror election results. So I did go back and I looked at, I looked at three recent surveys that we did. Two were similar type, similar, similar surveys, similar type situations all the way to smaller school districts. And so for instance, one that we did, the election was in November. Our comparison group had it as support at 51.1%. The vote total ended up being 58.6%, though our comparison group was a little bit lower. For another, the total was 58.3%, we had it at 55%, so again, a little bit lower. And I know that you've studied in Gruday and I'm not going to with a Gruday project. And the vote total there was 52.7%, yes. But we had the comparison group at about the, at about the same amount. So it tends to be, again, it tends to be about, about the same for that, for that. Again, when we're looking at that comparison group. With that, I will tell you that the all response group tends to be a little, little roserier than what actual vote totals end up, end up being. But again, I think what's interesting here is that the, that the all group and the comparison numbers were a bit color.
Any other questions? What about discussion? Would you like to, do you like to speak, Dr. Mahler?
Sure. One of the things I'll just kind of remind about process.
And that is, this is all part of the community engagement process. It started with community meetings and then went to task force meetings and then went to surveys. So it's just, this was another opportunity for anybody in the community to weigh in on our needs. So that, that's what this was, was really a next step. And I find it interesting, I find a lot of this interesting. I won't, I can't find it right away here. But one of the pieces was, or questions was, how familiar are you with the process? And 25% of the respondents said they're really familiar with the process, which I think just speaks to our, we need to continue to educate folks on, on what's going on, what the need is, what the potential solution is. We're not there yet. We're close. 25% probably isn't too bad. And I think if we really work our tails off, that by election day, maybe we can get that up to 35%. But, but I, but I think as a, as a board, I think you're doing a tremendous job with process. And I think that's where, that's an interesting piece in this finding. In addition to support or lack of support, I think just an understanding of process was, was highlighted in this survey as well.
Any other thoughts?
No, I'm just proud of the way that we've conducted this all the way from the start. We've tried to be transparent, we've tried to make the public involved. And really proud of the way we've conducted it. It's been, you know, a long time and we've listened a lot and we've heard a lot and we've learned a lot. And I'm grateful that we've all taken the time to do that. And that was with some of your leadership, the administration, and I think great work by us as a board.
Okay. Thank you to Joe for getting you and your colleagues to work so quickly to turn, turn around the results for us. Having it closed on Sunday and then probably writing quickly Monday and Tuesday to get this to us. We appreciate it.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay. So I guess we're moving on to the next agenda item, which is the final project selection for bond referendum. Assuming that's you, Jack.
I'll kick it over to him. You know, one, one of the things that's come through the process thus far is, if you look at it from a big rocks, what are the big rocks that come in to, to a potential solution at this point? It's a high school, a middle school, an elementary school, and a lot of projects for equity or parity, whatever word you want to use there, that, that really impact many buildings in our district and in total, impact our entire district. So I think that the new high school has received a lot of coverage, rightfully so. New middle school, I think, is pretty well understood. New elementary school gets talked about a little bit. The one thing that really, I think, is, is not understood yet is, what are those equity projects? What is that, what is that last 40 million plus of this $190 million conversation? What does that look like? And so today, we want to spend a good amount of time detailing what that is, what that portion of this bond looks like. And I can't think of anybody better to present that to you than Jeff Kreider, fresh off of spending last night in O'Hare Airport. Jeff?
Yep. Well, we put this booklet together that had a listing of that. And there's a rhyme or reason, if you look at the task force priority items. It's in that order of their priority. So you can kind of work through that on that order of priority. And I'll just kind of work you through it. But I put high school here, so you can see where the breakdowns were, the, you know, and what's included in there. And it has furniture and equipment, books and those sort of things that you can kind of see. But it's just not all construction that's part of that. So when people think of $84 million, there's land, there's a lot more to that. And it's, there's more breakdowns even underneath this. So this is kind of a summary. Same with middle school. People look at, they always wanted to look at McGovern and compare that. Well, McGovern, we brought all the furniture and a lot of the equipment with us, so there's differences as well. And McGovern wasn't initially constructed with a special ed component. We put some extra square footage in this so we can have a special ed component into the new middle school. So that's that one. The elementary school, once again, we have new furniture and equipment, library books, resources, roads and assessments that we'll have to do. And when you look at Sonoma Air, I mean, we brought a lot of Jefferson's stuff over. So we kind of hybrided that with some new and, and existing. So tried to take into that account. And there's also going to be some road improvements with the city, if we do it on that site, that there's an adjacent park there, so they'll have some.
Which I was going to mention, there's not the land cost in here.
Right, there's no land costs associated with that because.
We have the land already.
Yeah. So if we go to, start with Whittier, I have a Whittier replacement number here. So I just put that on your list, but, and what that would be is furniture and equipment, the library books and those sort of things. That'll be a combination of new and existing. But primarily, I think the task force looked at getting land associated with that, with Whittier. And if you turn the page to six, I've got kind of two footprints. If you look at the houses in those two, two block area and what a McGovern footprint might look like. And if you look a little closer, there's a Patrick Henry footprint in there as well. So you may not have to take that, that one row of houses there. It depends. And this is not going to be a prototype. It's going to be a new design that you would use and design specifically for that, that site. So there's a good chance that once we get that designed, we'll know a little, little more of what that would be and what that would be. But you look at building this while we're operating Whittier. And then once we get the building constructed, we move into that, then Whittier would become the parking lot for that project or for that new school. That existing offshoot there, whether we keep that or not, I don't know if we even need to keep that portion, that existing one or not, but that'll be, as we do the design and have design committees to do that down the road. That would be determined. The next group would be, would be security and ADA projects. That would be at Robert Frost, Horace Mann, Central Services, IPC, Washington, Lincoln and Roosevelt for exterior restrooms and Laura Wilder. Then if you just kind of page through that, if you look at, we try to put, when you look at these things, and this is what we did with our last several CIPs, we, we put an estimate together based on kind of a conceptual thing. The principals have seen this, so it's not out of the, just out of the blue. But we, we put design teams together. 80%, we hit pretty close, but there's a few of them that we don't hit so close. But we get the community members, some staff members together and work through this. This is our starting point and then we'll, we'll have their input when we do these CIP projects. So it may not look exactly the way this, this is when it comes to fruition, but it's a starting point and we have a basis to put it on. And we know that it can work in that. So we have a pretty comfort level that it's going, it can work with these drawings. So, so if you look at Robert Frost, you can look and see how an addition would possibly work with an office in the front. You know, whether that shape will be exactly that way. But, but we kind of took a Rosa Parks type, you know, Sonoma Air type and incorporated into portions of the existing structure. And then we would, we have some addition, some renovation costs so we can get the old office area and just something that would be usable as well. If you look at Horace Mann, where it would fit on the side, we'd probably move it back to where the, the existing, the office was originally, move it up to more towards 26th Street. And look at where you, how you could incorporate that with the existing drop-off and still incorporate. We're taking some of that existing office space and putting an addition on. So we'll incorporate existing and new onto that addition. And then we'll, we'll renovate the existing office space in the, in the some conference rooms and office space for them. But the primary purpose of this is to get the public to go in and queue into the office and get signed in, checked out without hitting the building and they can set, go. If somebody's not paying attention, they could be in, in the building. So it's really a security issue as well.
As you, as you remember listening to our Director of Risk Assessment, Bob Bray, one of the things he talks about frequently is perimeter security. And when we're talking about safety and security of our students, that perimeter security is always a critical piece of making sure that our people are safe. So that's what this addresses.
Yep. And getting, getting them in the office and properly checked in is really important. So this is, these are the only two buildings that we don't have that as far as schools. But we also have a couple of other ones here. One at Central Services and IPC, how that might have been accomplished. And Central Services is part of a bigger project with some dominoes. So that's why this was a little more expensive initially under the security part. But if you, if you look at the, the left portion of that, that map, I have the other portion as well. But building a conference area, replacing what's in, I don't know if you've been out there, Conference Room C, moving that to the outside, incorporating that into a new entrance where you can queue people in, go to the meeting rooms. Also have a place for high school testing so they, when students have to do a makeup test or something, they can come here right out of the chute. They don't have to get into the building and stop wandering. So that's part of it. And it'd be a secured receptionist at that lobby that anybody that comes into that building would get queued in, just like everywhere else. But the idea is that we're, we're creating space for screening and evaluation, renovation. So we need to do this first so they have a place to go where we renovate the existing one. But we would, right now, we have about 30 people in about a 900 square foot. They just have a desk.
Tight there.
Yeah, pretty, pretty tight. So it's part of a master plan of this and you'll see that later on. But the front entrance was a higher priority for the task force because of the security. Then IPC, if you look at putting a, an enclosed space for Burt, that would be a glass enclosure where they'd queue in so they can get back through. Also have a conference room where if you have a difficult situation, just off the lobby, not in, deep into, into the office space. So you can kind of stage where, where you need to be based on what kind of meeting you're going to have. So that, working with Bob, and this is very important to him to do that, Bob Bray. And this is an option. It can fit in there. It can work pretty well. And, and not feel like it's just an enclosed fishbowl, so to speak. The high schools, they're all somewhat related, Washington and Roosevelt and Lincoln. Lincoln is probably the best solution here, but they want a restrooms for outside events. So, and that comes after school, after schools close, weekends. So we have to open the school and, you know, so they can have restroom. There's no restrooms out, outside of the football or tennis courts at those schools. So this incorporates a restroom and we're, we're looking at attaching it to the building so I can get sewer. The biggest stumbling block is there's no sewer out by the football fields. And like at Washington, you would have to go to either Sixth Street or across, or Third Street, across Third Street and down the hill, or across Sixth Street into that residential area. So it just, it doesn't make a lot of sense to do that. I mean, you're going to have hundreds of thousands of dollars of sewer work to accomplish this. So the idea is that it's not that far a walk and put it by that staff entrance and then you can, you can have that opened up during events. They can walk over to it. Very similar to what they're doing now, but it's in a secure location. The sewer line of both of those are right. I have to go through a classroom to get there, but the depths are right and we should be able to accomplish it and lock it down and.
So it would be locked down unless there was something going on.
Yeah, yeah. But I can get heat. I can get a lot of things there. I can get electricity. And it's a much more economical solution. Now, if you look at Lincoln High School, that's a good solution because we have an old, old pair of restrooms there. And if you look at page 18, is what I'll do is expand those restrooms and have an outside entrance and an inside entrance. And when we're not using it for activities, we just lock it off to the outside and the students can use it and vice versa on the other side. So, so it's a pretty, pretty good solution both ways. Yeah, I like that. It just fit in there just great. But I wish, I wish we could have done that at the other schools too. You know, you're using it, you know, all year round instead of just during events. So that's what those buildings are. So then if we go to page 21, Laura Wild, there would be, I mean, you're not going to get 100%. There's two kindergarten rooms that we won't have ADA accessibility. But by building an elevator and a new stair tower and incorporating a bathroom renovation, that we're able to, off to the playground, we'll be able to have about 95% of this building ADA accessible. And if we have a student that's in a kindergarten room, because there's only two kindergarten rooms that, we can get them in ADA accessible from the outside, but I can't during, in the inside. We just move that student to the upper level where they don't have a, have an issue with ADA. And we're able to do that with the ADA laws for, for our, our classification. And we're able to do that with the ADA laws for, for our classification. So, I think this was on one of the original CIPs to do that and they did get funded.
Yeah.
Okay, then we move into outside, the Security and ADA, and the first one would be Horace Mann. That would be a sixth classroom addition. If you look at that, it would, we're not disrupting the pla, or the parking lot, we would wrap the addition around that southwest wing and it would, it would kind of have a circular. And we would design these with little bathrooms in there. They're not as, quite as big as, they'd be a, kind of a smaller classroom because they just don't have the, the number of kids in there. But they thought this would be a perfect solution to do that. And we would have to, if you look at the site plans, add more parking because of more staff. Right now, our parking isn't adequate if you ever get over there during, during the school day, there's cars all over. And then expand the playground, which is kind of what we have. So that's, that one, you can see kind of the relationship of the office with that.
Is that what this, is this the playground expansion?
No, playground is on your, if you're looking at it, it's on your right.
Oh, okay. Oh, yeah.
You can see where that diagonal is the edge of the playground. We're just shifting that. We actually just lose one basketball court to the existing playground. We're not losing a lot, but we need to grab that one.
Yep.
So Cleveland is probably the biggest project of this group. And I think it's easier to explain on the floor plan than it is in the front page. But there's also about one point eight, one point nine million dollars on that summary sheet of preventive maintenance projects that will be needed in the next five years. So what we'll do is we'll budget for that and our, our standard maintenance portion and get it, keep it off the bond. But like roofs, so that probably won't happen when we do this project, but a new boiler might happen when we do this project because I probably want to update, upsize that boiler to make it accommodate this. So we, we just need to coordinate when this project's going with what, when we schedule that for the, and for the maintenance budget. So, but this one, if you, if you look at where it sits, would be, if you know where that, the main office is, it would just go down that, straight down that hallway and you'd go right, right into the, the new gym. And then we'd expand the playground to the, to the east and move that early childhood playground as well. Probably build a retaining wall to get some more playground space, you know, that's a pretty good sized hill there. Make it better for maintenance as well. That's kind of a tough mowing hill. So we try to solve for a lot of things when we update this. So you look at opportunities when you can do that. But if you look at this building, if you look at the first, page twenty-nine, I'll just kind of, we'll start up with it. You have a gymnasium, then you have some resource rooms, you'll have locker rooms that are, these are all to standards. So when we base this on, it's the standards that we'll do. Then we go around and we'll convert, we'll have three early childhood classrooms. Right now, there's two, two without, that aren't to standards and there's one classroom. So we, we will renovate those two and that other classroom into three. Then you get restrooms in them. So that's part of that project. Your existing gym is where it says multipurpose room. And you can see, take a look at the difference in size. It's probably this, one of the smaller gyms we have. I mean, we're, we saved a little money when we did this originally and took the stage out. It's a play, it's a, it's a station, you know, you could use on PE, but it doesn't do a whole lot for when you're doing ball games and those kind of things. But then the old locker rooms would become the kitchen, hot cards, storage, and then an early childhood office that would be associated with this. And then the old multipurpose would be, actually become the music and the band rooms. And then, this was part of the original CIP, the past CIP, that we, we traded this project in for all the security ones and then we didn't get this funded. And then upstairs, the art would move over to where the band is upstairs. And then we've converted the existing, you know, just a standard classroom. And part of this too is we have to, we have that sloped metal roof, we have to lift that roof because of drip loading. And it's, it's kind of a bad, it's got a clear story windows and that, they're all needing to be replaced, so it's a good opportunity to take care of all that. And then they have univentilators in those rooms and we update the HVAC in those rooms as well. So it's going to be a much better system for those kindergarten rooms on that side. Okay, and then Memorial Middle School. This is expand the music area. You can see where that is. It doesn't impact any of the parking, it just, we'll have to relocate a couple of bike racks back there, but we'll just move those to the west. We're actually adding a bike rack this summer along that east sidewalk, so that'll help. But if you look at page thirty-three, it kind of shows the layout. It basically does a, cuts through, basically the orchestra and choir rooms are really small there. And when we, when we did McGovern, we changed the sizing of those to, to better serve the people. And this is our biggest school in middle school. And it will be after we're done with all this even. That we cut through that with a corridor through the old orchestra room. We upsize the music TPC, get them better instrument storage and convert the old choir, choral room into a general music. Then we build a new choir room and orchestra room to the same size that McGovern is and with the appropriate instrument storage. Now you see doors to the outside, that's because code requires two exits out of there and this is probably the, the most economical solution to get there. So it's, it's really confined just to the music area. JFK is, is another project that, a little bit similar to Cleveland where there's a lot, a lot of dominoes, but you look at it as, on page thirty-five, expand the gymnasium to the east through the parking lot, then incorporate a bigger drop-off area and parking lot, very similar to Harvey Dunn, if you, if you know Harvey Dunn and how that gets dropped off there. We'll have to work with the city on that Duran East channel and, you know, to extend that like they've gone through the road and, and those sort of things with this. But if you look at the floor plan, you'll see a gymnasium that's, that's the size of a sort of my air or all the new discovery, all the, those four sec, four section schools. New locker rooms, gym storages. The old locker rooms and the old gym will become the multipurpose room. And the locker rooms will become food service and the multipurpose restrooms. And then the old multipurpose will be, we'll get that kindergarten room that's there to a normal size, a kindergarten room size and, and move the music room up to where that, where the service area is so the noise is up, up in that area. And we'd convert the, the, the music room down on that special ed wing to the south into a classroom. But that's where that old music room is. Okay? And Central Services, this is kind of in conjunction with the other is renovate screening and evaluation. We would like to look at chopping off the truck storage area and getting a, a loading dock type situation. It's going to be a flat loading dock, it's not a dock type area. So I kind of don't want you to think it might be that. But the, where the, where the warehouse trucks can back in and load up, they can have, and then it's sized enough for all the staging and the risers and that. Because we, we have central risers and staging that move to different schools all the time. So we have that right behind the trucks so they can just move them right in. And we'll put an overhead door into the warehouse and it simplifies, it makes that much more efficient than what's happening now. And with that, we have to relocate the vehicle storage and that would be on a grass area. And, I mean, we want to thank the city for building that parking lot because that was originally part of that. And with that, so it accomplishes the city parking lot, ties into that for us and gets the vehicle storage. And these, the trucks that you see are existing ones, so we don't, we're not building a whole lot of extra room. There is a little bit of extra room if we, in the vehicle storage in the front of the plow trucks, you know, for some miscellaneous equipment if, if we so go over the next several years. Then the next one would be Instructional Planning Center would be to expand an exterior storage addition and community ed, storage area on the north, north side. And then take the exterior storage that's on the south, south end and convert that into a curriculum library area. So it's not down in that wet basement area and it's a little more subject to climate control. So not only, our exterior storage is, is pretty small, so it doesn't really house everything that we need. So that would get that to our standard, district standard. And we would access that through that multipurpose room. And eventually, if that doesn't, if we need that for a room, it would, there would be a corridor over to it. But I, right now, I don't think, they don't use that much, so I don't think you need the corridor. Then Lowell Elementary would be just to purchase property around there for a future school. That would be a block. And don't have it identified yet, we just need to do some research. There's probably three options for that. East, east, west and north. Now, part of me thinks north might be the best solution. East, or east is a pretty good solution as well. As you go west, it kind of starts, the grade starts dropping off, so it may not be as, quite as good, but haven't done a lot of research. It, there are about the same amount of properties in there for either way. Okay, Jane Adams would be, that would be constructing, extending that hallway to the west. You know, there's a metal shed there if you, if you, by Kiwanis. It's at, it gets, doesn't get to Kiwanis, but put a band orchestra and a music room on, on the end of that building. And there's another Jane Adams project you'll see later and you'll see how that all ties Hayward Elementary. Hayward is probably one of the schools that has the least amount of storage of any school we have. So they have storage on top of storage and it's hard to even get a tractor in the exterior storage because they got desks and chairs and things in there. So we're trying to address this, that with this one. But when we put that community center, we said we're going to use existing locker rooms and PE office. And then we put a PE storage, which is to our standards, but it's really not big enough because they put all the electrical equipment in there. So we've got to keep away from that. So this one would take, put the boys and girls locker room into the main gym, put a PE office there where he should be, he or she is stationed there, there by where the kids are. And then provided some additional storage area and with a custodial closet. Then convert the locker room, basically just make those multipurpose storage and general Robert Frost would be expand, this is, this once again is, when we built this, it was a three section school, four thousand square foot and the standards are at a four plus section is, is larger than that would be expand. How, it doesn't make it a square, but it gives you another teaching station to have in there and we'd have a curtain there. But it also allows, when you have a concert and that, you can house more people in there. Then Washington, these next two will be very similar, Washington and Roosevelt. I'll just explain. Washington Roosevelt would be to expand the weight room to, to make it similar. Like I said, once we have, somebody have something greater than the other, it becomes a new standard. You know, Lincoln converted their wrestling room into a weight room. So that now seems to be the new standard and weight room went up to the upstairs. Very similar to the other ones, but by doing this, we looked at how, I've always been uncomfortable with how the exiting out of the main gym, we have to have four exits out of the main gym. And one of those goes through this corridor that we're trying to create. If you look on page fifty-five. So I can take them straight outside instead of through a gymnasium. Right now, the door swing into the gym and you, so you got to keep that open. You can't lock it so security wise. It kind of takes care of two things. Then while we're doing this, we can get the training room to where they, they need to be, upsize the coaches offices to what Lincoln has. And then by putting that corridor in, I got to, the uniform storage has to be there and so multipurpose and then the mechanical to house that. This would also air condition that weight room that they don't have. I think you've heard of that one for a while, the weight room, air conditioning. So, and Lincoln is just expanding to a storage room to expand the training room to, to a comparable size. So, that's those. Then Jane Adams, come on, another project at Jane Adams. This is the one that constructs a parking lot in the existing playground area on Kiwanis and then convert, there's two houses that we have options on that owned by the same person. And then we put that playground into that, on the east side, get it away from Kiwanis. It's much safer for the kids. And you can see where that addition would be on that, and so that kids could drop off and bring their instruments right in there. And so it works out fairly well. But with that, we would probably change the dumpster delivery and how we access through that, in that dock. So, that is, this was on the original CIP as well. But Mr. Kilborn is still living there and we don't want to kick him out of his house. He's an elderly gentleman and, so we work, we work well together. He kind of keeps an eye on the house, or the school for us, so. Okay, and then the last one would be sort of my air. And that would be just obtaining some property, not sure where, I haven't looked at it that close, to, for some, for some additional parking.
Thank you.
So that's that list of fourteen, other than the, the big three. How do you want to go through this?
Does anybody want a five minute break before we go into discussion or just go into discussion?
I think you need a five minute break.
Okay. We've been sitting for an hour, so.
It's a long tempo snack.
Is that all right if we just take a quick?
Oh, yeah.
Break and then we'll come back for discussion? Okay.
That's one of many options. We just got to get it.
Yes, why not go about one that one?
Yes, why not go about one that one?
Thanks for that little five minute break.
Thank you.
We'll go on to discussion. Was there anything else you wanted to add, Jeff?
Any questions on any of those projects that you might have that I could answer?
I think I would just say, I have two things. The first one is more of a comment and clarification. So when we look at the list that we went through and the order that we went to, you said it was prioritized. So I just want to clarify for people who maybe didn't attend or watch any of the meetings that it wasn't prioritized by us sitting here at the table. It was prioritized by the task force who said if we could choose, this is what we find to be the most important or the highest priority. And then based on the number of people who rated it a certain way, that's how the ranking came out.
That's correct.
Yeah, I just want to make sure because I think when you say it's prioritized, it's hard to know by who. So just heard that. And then am I imagining things or do I remember that JFK still has movable walls?
Yes, they do.
And so that's not part of this?
That would be not part of that. But we would, there's some other lists that came about with, and that'd be an operation maintenance.
Okay.
When that time comes, that would be under that budget.
Okay. I went to Oscar Howe and we had movable walls. And so that's like a memory of elementary school for me. So I, when we went through it, I'm like, I swear that there was still a school.
Hayward and JFK have the same operable walls.
Okay, thank you.
Is this page that has the number breakdown totals, I was looking, I didn't see it in the published, like, so when the public goes to our website, will they see this?
I'm not sure.
This one. Could we add this page that has totals up all the projects to the AM2? I just think that's helpful to the public.
I think one of the things that we need to look at is when you look at the column labeled overall and the column labeled bond, you see it, and then go to the bottom, you see there's a $2.8 million difference in those two. So how do we reconcile that $2.833 million is a question. And then another question is, do you like the rank order? Carly did a nice job of explaining how this became the rank order. Ultimately, you'll decide the scope of the bond issue and the priority level. So you can endorse it or change it, but you have to be comfortable with it when we ultimately take it out. And then again, there's that $2.833 million reconciliation that needs to take place there.
There's probably a little bit more. If you look at the overall, this is kind of what the task force was working with. And if you notice under the high school, the land doesn't show up on that. What we did here, what I did here on the bond was just more of a straw man type thing. There's a lot of different ways to get there. It's how can we get to that 190 because that's what we're shooting for. And I'll just give you what I did and what I showed being taken out, how we got to that. And this isn't set in any stone. This is where you need to jump in and say, this is not what I want. But on this one, we plugged the 2.3 to give you some options if you want the Sanford land or some other site. There is $600,000 in that overall, a little over $600,000 for that additional option for land. So if you look at that, so there's about 2.9, close to $3 million for land for the high school.
Jeff, so that would make us 40 acres?
Forty, I think 45, isn't it?
Okay.
35 donation and 10 to purchase.
Great.
So when you actually get there and get the roads and get the right of ways, you get to about 40 acres.
Yep.
So if you look at, then when I went down and looked at, okay, how would I do it if it was me doing it? I looked at Lowell Elementary's land. So if you had the option for the high school and didn't do that, that money could go right back to Lowell.
I noticed that too.
And same with Sotomayor, kind of in the same concept. Now Hayward, I zeroed out because the parks is doing an overall study of all their park sites, their programs, their community centers, and probably want that complete before we move forward with something. So that's why I said, let's take that off the table until they come back and say that's going to be what they do because it could change how we look at that. And then would the inflation, to tweak that inflation to 13.1, and then we just have to manage the projects to that level as it goes out and how fast we get them done. So just looking at it a simple way, does almost all the projects except for some of the land. And some of the land is going to, like the Lowell, and you know, those things could, you could just take an approach that you buy them when they come open because we don't know when we're going to build. You just kind of steady as you go. So a common sense type approach. And that's kind of how we've looked at some of that land purchases. And it gets us to that 190. But there's a lot of ways to get there.
I mean, I do like that the security projects are up there. Many of these we have been kind of putting on hold for many years. So having them really be right behind the new buildings, I think I agree with that priority of those.
If, I mean, to balance out the 2.833 to get back to the 190 even, if we were to say, we look at the projects at Central Services and IPC and say those, I'm not sure are on our priority list so that we come balanced at that 190 million, how much heartburn would there be if we said the 2.2 million in IPC and Central Services, we're not sure that we can consider that as a priority item? How do you feel about that?
I don't have any trouble with the IPC portion. Maybe what we need to do is prioritize, re-prioritize, I'm sure Jeff already has prioritized, but the Central Services piece because that is more day-to-day logistics that has an impact on our buildings, believe it or not. But those would be good places to start.
And I'm not saying that I don't think they're necessary or a priority. It's important that we have proper facilities to take care of the facilities that we take care of. But we also...
Priority wise.
Yeah, we also need to, I think, make sure that that 190 is where we stop. So I would, I'd like to have you get back to us with what your priorities would be for the Central Services projects and IPC.
Is the screening and evaluation, is that part of the security entrance? Or is that down at list, is that into number seven?
That is the actual renovation of that area.
Okay.
So what I'm doing is, as part of that security is freeing up that space available.
It'll help, right, okay.
And give them a place to temporarily house while we're doing it.
Okay. Because that would be important. I mean, I have spent quite a bit of time in that area for meetings and other things, and it is really...
I would say that's probably the highest priority of that group.
Yep.
We do have people in some pretty bad spots. And not only that, is we have parents that bring kids in and they're not comfortable, this has a family bathroom that they can go to. They're going down to our office bathrooms. Then they're not comfortable, do I go in with my child?
Yeah.
Do I, that. So those are important pieces. But the other two are probably purchasing, I know purchasing would say that's a pretty important thing, but you can't do one without the other because you lose too much. So it's kind of, you either do it the way we're operating and then just put that on lower priority.
For Lowell, I mean, what are we thinking the lifespan there is?
Boilers, HVAC system, roofs are probably, you know, 15, 20 years at least. So we're not in a bad desperate spot. I mean, other than we don't have parking. I think parking was part of the original, but you got to look at...
Yeah.
But that wouldn't necessarily be the whole block type thing. And we accommodated, we could do a pull-off on Prairie to get some parking area. We could do a pull-off on Seventeenth, or is it Seventh? Yeah, Seventh. No, Seventeenth.
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth. And accomplish some of those things for parent drop-off and help it and get us there without purchasing property for 20 years.
Lowell is not dissimilar to, it's not dissimilar to Whittier, really, in terms of...
The age of the building.
The age, the ADA, the...
Doesn't have as many levels.
Doesn't make sense to put a lot of money into it over time. So it makes sense to begin to make plans for its replacement. But I think its replacement needs to be right where it is.
My priority would be, it's the commitment to the core of our school district. That's where we have to have an elementary school. That neighborhood does have a lot of young families, a lot of kids that are, that walk and that are there. And I think we've made a commitment to that area and I want to make sure that we continue that commitment.
I think, when I think back to the community input meetings where we talked to people live and they were able to share, some of the things that we heard were, you know, classrooms feel full, gymnasiums feel full, band and orchestra rooms feel full. And so when I look at a lot of the things that are on this list, we're trying to fix those things which will make, I think, experiences overall in all of those activities really positive for kids. And it'll give more opportunities for students who want to be in band and orchestra or who want to, you know, be in athletics and things like that. So I like those things about this because I think that adds to just the experience of the educational offerings that we have here. So I feel like those are priorities because as we are building new schools to help with that, we're still going to continue having some of those needs. And so making sure that we're taking good care of the students who are participating in those activities is important. And I like to see the variety of us addressing those where they need to be addressed at the schools that we currently have.
At the same token, parking is so important for safety. We think it's just a parking lot, but you get somewhere where you're running across the street or somewhere where you're in a neighborhood, and those are important.
Well, it's not getting us any closer to 190 million.
Yeah, I know.
One of the things to think about too is you do a $190 million bond issue. The question is how quickly and how efficiently can you get these projects completed? The quicker you get them completed, the less inflation you have to deal with. It's possible that $190 million can cover everything that you have on that chart.
Based on speed.
Today.
But we still have that sense of prophecy to know what that's going to look like over the next five or 10 years.
Well, I mean, could we move, you know, move some down further, especially where, you know, maybe there's some property that needs to be bought for parking or whatever? Because those aren't, if the property is not available...
Money won't get spent.
We won't be spending that money.
But if it is?
We need the money to be able to buy them.
Yeah.
Need the money available.
And also, over time, that's probably a smaller amount of money. You know, if a property or two properties become available in the first year or two, you're not spending that whole allotment, you know, to cover that.
I'm just seeing, I'm just looking at that 3 million right there for Lowell. I'd be curious, in that neighborhood, what is the frequency that properties become available? If only there were a realtor.
Residential real estate expert.
You know, I think some houses in some neighborhoods turn over faster. And so when we think about that neighborhood, like, is it average? Is it slower, faster? You know what I mean?
I don't know that we're equipped to answer that.
Right. But maybe for, yeah, just a follow-up to, is it realistic to think that we would be able to get that?
How many rental properties are over there?
What was that?
How many rental properties are over there?
Yeah, we'd have to do a little more research than we have.
Yeah. So that might make a difference in the amount of money that needs to be available or doesn't need to be available immediately.
Not that that's the answer, but when you talk about purchasing when available, instead of going after them, you're obviously paying closer to market value. And if the rates keep going up, you're going to see more homes available and the pricing probably adjusts a little bit. But right now, without the price range, it's hard to get anything. Everything's either taken for rental or it passes between neighbors or relatives or friends just because of the lack of inventory. There, I kind of pretended I was a realtor for a minute.
Anyone else have thoughts on how to get it to the 190?
I'll get him up.
Please.
How critical is it that at this meeting, we get this to $190 million? Or is there a thought that $190 million is what we have? And we'll begin to go through the priorities.
And we've got to figure it out.
Yeah. For example, maybe a year from now, we say Central Services needs this but doesn't need that.
Second issuance.
Yeah, we're dealing with 1.5% of our total here. We're dealing with an unknown inflationary rate. My question is, do we need to take that 2.833 million out today? Is that critical?
Today?
What I think I hear from the board is a commitment to the 190 million that the task force has recommended.
We can figure out over the next year or so where the...
It's going to be fluid. We know that, right? We know that...
Moving target.
If the community says so, you'll build an $84.7 million high school. The actual cost of that won't be $84.7 million. It might be 84.2. We don't know exactly until we get into that what the exact cost will be. So I, but we know we're limited by $190 million. We know that's our limit. And I think what I've heard are some priorities. This will be my summary of what I think I heard from a couple of conversations. We can make some changes to this as we go. Make those changes as far away from kids as we can. That's why I think IPC and centralized services came up. That's why I think parking lots came up. Things that are still important for the day-to-day functioning of what we do, but it's not classrooms. And so I'm not so sure that, you need to go through an exercise here that says $2.833 million, we strike from this. I don't know if it changes anything we do tomorrow.
Okay. Does everyone feel about that?
I feel comfortable because we have so many other moving parts that could affect these numbers as well that as long as we are somewhere close, pretty close to it and kind of wait to see, A, where the vote comes out and B, how fast and slow that some of these projects and where the numbers come out, then we can make that next determination of what might need to be budgeted and...
Just think of one issue, Cynthia, as you were talking, I thought about this. Just think of one issue, purchasing or not purchasing land for a high school. Balances it or doesn't balance it?
Right.
And not to put too much focus onto that one piece. There are another, a number of pieces like that where that amount of money can come in rather quickly.
The commitment that I'm making is maximum of $190 million to be spent on the three big rocks, the high school, middle school, elementary school.
The security.
And security and equity. And the 190 million, to me, is, that's a number that I won't be willing to see us go over. And that I am confident, based on what I've observed with the task force and the work that they did, very comprehensive work, by the way, and the survey results really reflected the same sort of commitment from the people that took the time to respond. And I believe that we're going to be passing a $190 million bond issue at an election in September that then the challenge will be for the administration to make sure that the 190 million gets spent the very best way that it can be spent. I'm good with that for today.
Does everybody agree?
Yep. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Jeff, I was remiss thanking you for all your work too with the task force because I know how much time you've spent into these and everything else that you prepared for those task force members. So thank you for that and for all of this too.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else on this topic? All right, thank you. I guess we will move on to committee reports. Todd, do you want to start?
Sure. Heading to PIER this weekend to go over what the Associated School Board of South Dakota will be bringing to the legislature. And so I met with Todd. It's just a preliminary. Once we put something together, I'll make sure all of you see what we're looking at and make sure I get your comments. So when we get to that point, we're all in agreement. It's not just what's best for Sioux Falls, but best for the state. But we also want to make sure that we're taken care of in that position. Sports Authority, we're losing our executive director, so we're in the hunt for a new one. But things are going extremely well. The Sanford International Golf Tournament at Minnehaha is going very well. They're raising enough money. Sanford's helped. The Golf Channel has chipped in and the PGA has really stepped up. So what I was worried about for fundraising, it looks like, at least for the first year, we're going to be okay. And this will be a real feather in the cap for Sioux Falls. That's all I've got.
Just remembering ASBSD, if anyone's planning on attending the convention in September, August.
August.
Just make sure you let Bev know.
9/10, I think.
Yeah.
Let Bev know.
That one.
So just let Bev know. She'll get us registered.
Southeast Tech, initial enrollment numbers are still looking positive. 2% to 3% increase in enrollment and in credits. So they're tracking a little bit ahead, which Bob and the team out there are very pleased with what they're continuing to see. And not that there aren't challenges, there certainly are with all of the workforce needs and everything else. I think there still are some issues with folks not necessarily completing, but there are some really solid plans for making some changes in process that will help to address those concerns. So I just, I feel very positive about what is going on out there. And that's the only committee, the only thing I've had since our last meeting, so.
One thing too on STI, Bob has mentioned to us, because we've, you know how in the board meetings we've been doing the department highlights, the program highlights? We've gone through all of them this last year. So if anybody has any other ideas or anything in that regard that you'd like to see from the meetings, just let him know.
Calendar's not meeting. We haven't met for policy and Pat hasn't met. We have our workforce development with the Chamber and Education and Workforce Development meeting tomorrow for the month. So I don't have any new updates on that except for, just to thank Deanne for the time. Well, she has been the co-chair of that group for the last seven years and has spent a lot of time and energy helping with the agenda and organizing and getting people there to do presentations. And it's really morphed into more workforce development than education. And so she will no longer be the co-chair, but I'm sure will still be very active and very supportive. So I just wanted to recognize her for the commitment that she's had to that and really making sure that it's meaningful every time that we meet. She's done a really nice job on the, a little over a year that I've been on it, but she's been in that role for the last seven years. So I don't have any updates until tomorrow, but next time.
Insurance, we won't meet till September. Affordable housing, we're meeting August 22. Sioux Falls Education Foundation, we're meeting next week, but we did hire the executive director who is starting July 16. It's Allison Struck. So I'm excited to see what... Allison Struck. And she was with Feeding South Dakota.
Okay.
That's where she comes from. And very excited. She's going to be wonderful in the position and we're excited to work with her.
Great.
Yeah, Head Start is in recess until August. And I missed a Chamber board meeting today. I had a meeting that I...
So did I.
Okay. Or were you just flying back?
I was actually back, but I did not go to the meeting.
Okay. Just policy, other than we do have second reads coming up, I believe, right? And then one thing we will be doing during our annual retreat is going through the board policies this year. So if anyone wants to take a look at those ahead of time, and if you have any ideas for changes, we can certainly take those. Kate's going to do a first review. But during the retreat, we can have further conversation if you guys feel the need. And I think that's all I have.
Those are the B policies?
Yeah, the B policies. Okay. Anything else? Okay. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right, we are adjourned. Thank you.